For our work session, November 7th. Starting with proposed action items for next month. Under academic and student affairs, we have several new programs. It could be presenting on things from each institution. First one is Central Alabama Community College, Associate Applied Science Certificate Medical Assistant Technology Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and Chancellor Baker. We appreciate the opportunity to seek board approval for the college to implement a medical assisting technology program. While we currently offer Associate Applied Science certificates and short-term certificates in programs, this is not going to be a significant departure from what we do. We have a strong health science program. This will be a complement to our existing programs and provide a career pathway that would offer our students multiple entry points and exit points. So, we are asking to implement this program to support our local community and workforce needs. And I've asked Dr. Jennifer Steele, our Health Science Program Director, to actually walk you through the packet of information that you received about the program and answer any questions that you might have.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity. I do want to go off of what Dr. Burroughs said. Currently, we have in our Health Science Program, nursing. This last admission year, we had 175 applicants into the nursing program. Only 63 of those met the requirements for nursing. So, the question is, what do we do with the other 110, 112 students? Certainly, there are some that are not ready to come into nursing or health sciences, but I think it is a viable option to offer the students that don't meet nursing requirements, the option to do medical assistance. The other very viable option for us is dual enrollment with our high schools. We have high demand for the host of programs in Zillikoga, in Childersburg, and in working with those programs to help offer those students the option to go ahead and begin college courses. Tallapoosa County is probably one of the highest, well, it actually is the highest nursing home per capita. So, the clinical assistant exit option is a good situation for these students to offer the community healthcare. We have phlebotomy credential, sacral credential to work with our hospitals, work with our urgent cares, our medical offices in building that workforce. The administrative medical assistant, again, to work with the medical offices, work in the hospitals, and then certified medical assistant technician. As far as facilities, that is not a problem for us. We have two very nice nursing programs, one in Childersburg, one in Alex City, with the labs, bed labs, that we can offer training. We have new simulation labs to offer that option in the clinical portion. We will not actually have to hire new faculty. We have two faculty that can teach the business courses. And then, the other option for us is to take one of our nursing faculty and have her become a certified medical assistant, which has been done at one of our neighboring programs. So, we would not have to hire new faculty. We would have minimal financial implications, and those, that implication would be just to buy simple medical equipment specific to the medical technology program. Again, this program would offer a better option for students coming out of high school or currently in the host of programs in our high schools is dual enrollment. There are multiple entry and exit options for them. It's an alternative to nursing, but it also helps prepare them for nursing. Maybe they're not quite ready with their grades, their science courses. This would at least get their foot in the door for healthier. Questions? Thank you.
I have two is a request for Associate Applied Science.
Good morning, it's a pleasure to see all of you today, and we appreciate the opportunity to present our proposal for a new program in a field that's very important in primary healthcare today, and that's dental health. We are responding to the needs of the workforce in our area as well, and the outreach that we have actually received from dental health providers in our area. And so, I've asked Dr. Deborah Curry, the Dean of Health Sciences, to explain our proposal and answer questions.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. As you will see in the information that we provided you, we had in 1718 semester, we had over 467 students who applied for seven different health science programs at Gadsden State who were qualified applicants but did not get in. So, we are trying constantly to capture these students. Many of them want to be in a helpful profession like health sciences, and they're not absolutely certain that it needs to be nursing, or DMS, or any other, but they are just interested. So, we are trying to grow the health sciences options for these students. And we did a survey, as you'll see from dentists, we surveyed 103 dentists, and we had a 30% response rate. They were in support of the program. The students we surveyed were in our biology prerequisite courses, biology 201 and 202. These students, out of 163 surveyed, 61 showed interest in dental hygiene, and 87% of the 61 students who showed interest were interested in the program at Gadsden State. If you look at the budget, we started with a minimum of 10 students. That's the break-even level, as you'll see with the numbers. We project that the second year, if we increase the applicants to 14, we would show a profit of $23,999. And we would hope to grow the program yearly after that. The extramural funds that have been provided are provided through Perkins Funds and Title III. This major will be presented and maintained on Valley Street Campus, which is our historically black college and university from Gadsden State. Are there any questions? Thank you.
I agree, is a request for Associate Applied Sciences with surgical technology while the state community college, while the state community college does.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and Chancellor Baker. My name is Leslie Reader, I'm Dean of Instruction at Wallace Community College Doven, and I appreciate you allowing us to come today about our proposal for a surgical technology program. This program is definitely going to meet the needs of our workforce. In about 2014, we were approached by Flowers Hospital, Community Health Systems Incorporated system. They were actually providing their own surgical technology program. They admitted about 15 students a year, they had 100% success rate, and graduation rate. They've operated for about 25 years, and due to accreditation standards, they are closing that program, and they asked if we would consider opening the program. As a result, we did a broad needs assessment, as you can find in your packet, and we found that there is definitely a need, there continues to be difficulty in finding surgical technologists. So, we also did a survey for our students that were in the natural sciences area, the biology 103, the anatomies, those students that are typically going into health science programs. And we surveyed about 130 students. About half of them definitely wanted to go into surgical technology. And it's not including the students that have already heard about, possibly, opening the program, wanting to apply and wanting to get into this field. Right now, in our area, again, as your packet will show, we have a tremendous need for surgical technologists. We have several surgical sites that are located within our area. We actually have additional sites that are being built as we speak. So, again, we have the workforce that's coming to us requiring this need. In terms of the budget, we have been very blessed in that we've received tremendous community support. We applied for and received from the Wiregrass Foundation, a grant of $551,000 that would actually support our funding for the first two years. Since this proposal, we have received a $50,000 commitment from Flowers Hospital, and we continue to receive information from other healthcare facilities that are very interested in supporting this program.
What does a surgical technologist do?
They are assisting the surgeons in various surgical procedures.
So, they do, they do things that a surgical nurse does not do?
Surgical nurse, I'm going to let Kathy Bunning, our Associate Dean of Health Science, explain the difference.
They may do some of the very same things. A surgical technologist passes the instruments, assists with the procedures, as well as a nurse who is trained to do a work in surgery, does similar things. So, it's a paired up profession within the OR.
So, is being a nurse a prerequisite to?
No, sir, no, sir. This is a standalone program. It is not the nursing role of a first to assist or a surgical nurse. This is a certified surgical technologist.
Thank you. So, flowers offered a certificate before, and now they're applying for such a certificate?
They're, they're offering a certificate. Right now, the accreditation has changed, which suggests an associate degree and long certificate, which is what we would be offering.
Flowers is not an educational institution, so they can't, they offer a certificate from their program, but it is not an academic credential. And the requirement links those programs with an academic institution, which they knew they could not do for that program.
Do you have a question?
Is it performing robotic surgery, is there really training related to that? I'm just curious, I hear so many people have robotic type.
I have a forward file, a request from Northwest Shoals Community College, diagnostic medical sonography and medical radiology technology.
Good morning, Chancellor Baker, Chairman Thompson, and Board Trustees members. Thank you so much for considering our application for these two programs. A few months ago, we had a building offer for a building adjacent to our campus that is already ready to, as Ed Watley puts it, move-in ready. And we toured the building, and it's, it's perfect for these two programs. So, we pulled a lot of statistics at that time, and Mr. Mark Simpson, who is with me here today, he's going to talk a little bit more about some of the stats that we pulled to see if we're meeting the needs of our hospitals. We also have some people with us here today, I want to tell you who's with me. I have Mr. Mark Simpson, who's our Health Studies Chairperson, with me. And I have Rose Jones, our Associate Dean of Workforce Development. And I have two gentlemen from our, one of our local hospitals. Scott Edwards, Associate Administrator of the New North Alabama Medical Center that is being built and is supposed to open in December, which is now ECM, or Eliza Coffee Memorial Hospital. And I have Mr. Brandon Fisher, who is the Director of Imogen Services at Shoals Hospital. And we looked at a lot of statistics, and we toured the building. And Mr. Watley asked me to explain, he did tour the building. He may not have remembered that, there was a tornado the day he came, so. That may be why he told you he had not toured, but he has toured the building. And it's pretty much move-in ready. We've got a couple of things to do to the restrooms, to make them, bring them up to code, but they're minor revisions to the building. And now, Mr. Simpson and Mr. Edwards are just going to talk to you a little bit about the need for these programs in our area.
Thank you, Chancellor Baker and Board, for this opportunity. Related to these two programs, the employment rate and growth is projected to grow. For radiological tech, we see that by 13% between 2016 and 2026, which is much faster than the average for all occupations. In the sonography area, the employment rate is expected to grow by 17% from 2016 to 2016, again, much faster than the average of all occupations. Sonography is also one of the projected five fastest-growing occupations in Alabama, which is rated by 45% by 2022. After a discussion with our communities of interest, our local industry current and future demand is strong. It's projected to grow stronger for both programs. We have three hospitals located within a 10-mile radius of our college campus, and another four within a 50-mile radius. The local hospital, one of them had, their imaging center had a disruption in services related to a lack of certified staff, and that was specifically related to sonography. And of course, we will have the new regional hospital opening in 2018 with a regional cancer center that will open soon afterwards, which is also going to increase the demand for physicians in these areas. Our current available program, the closest to us for our college for these programs is 75 miles away from our Muscle Shoals campus. Our largest hospital, which is ECM currently, which will become North Alabama Medical Center, has five available clinical slots available for the technology students in Rad Tech, and there's only currently two being utilized by any other institution. Helen Keller Hospital, which is another clinical agency, has one Rad Tech physician available for student use, and according to their director, has been infrequently used by other institutions. And currently, Shoals Hospital, which is another clinical site, has none of those slots being utilized. So, we will be able to meet the clinical demands for the programs with our institutions surrounding our campus. We also looked at the National Clearinghouse data for our Northwest Shoals students. In 2014, 2015, there were zero students that graduated from a sister institution. Sonography had two. In 2015, 2016, Rad Tech had one, sonography again, two. And in 2016, 2017, Rad Tech had four graduates and sonography, two. We did complete an electronic survey of our currently enrolled students at Northwest Shoals. 243 of those students indicated desire for the Rad Tech program, and 262 for the diagnostic medical sonography. And at this time, I will let Mr. Edwards, who has a couple comments.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I come to you as a person who actually is a product of the community college educational system. I actually graduated 25 years ago from Southern Union State Community College, and their wonderful radiology program they have there. Gone on to get my bachelor's degree, my MBA. So, none of that would have been possible without the first step of going and graduating from a community college and setting goals for myself. I was raised by a single mother in Phoenix City. We did not have a whole lot of money. And so, it was a great opportunity for me to get my first educational experience, and then jobs, and then help pay for my own education moving up. That's the opportunity that we're looking at for the Shoals. I don't know if you're aware, but the wage index for the Shoals, northwest corner of Alabama, is the lowest in the state. It is absolutely the lowest, it's lower than anywhere else I've ever lived. And it's tough for those people that want to actually go and learn a health science, like radiology technology, to drive 70 miles to go to the current provider of that program. The other challenge for us is that the program is located geographically between Birmingham and Huntsville, so they're pulling from those communities. And we're geographically isolated about 70 miles west off of 157. Y'all kind of know where we're at. And so, it's, this, my comments are not about the quality of students that the other program is putting out, because they're excellent. And I can, I can tell you they're excellent, because I used to be a program director for Gulf Coast Community College in Panama City, Florida, for the School of Radiology. I was also a clinical coordinator at Southern Union State Community College early on in my career. One of my jobs allowed me to work two jobs and go get my bachelor's degree. So, I know the community college healthcare system, and I understand the importance of what it brings to our region and to outreach, and allow those jobs to be filled by people, by single mothers, by people who would not have the opportunity. And in our part of the state, that's what we have. We have people that may not have transportation to drive 70 miles to go three days a week to class. They'd like to stay locally at our, at our wonderful local community college and have these programs offered. So, I'm not here today to say what we have is not adequate as far as the quality, it's the quantity and the availability to those that live in our region. And I just want to close, Mr. Chancellor made a comment in his opening remarks, and he said, "Increase expectations." And I'm, my closing thought to you guys is that, that is all that Northwest Shoals Community College is trying to do, is increase expectations and opportunities for the people who live in the Shoals in Northwest Alabama. Thank you for your time.
One more comment, since we have two separate applications, all those facilities costs are duplicated. So, really, when you look at them, they're in both applications, but there only going to be one set of facilities cost. The building is approximately 15 years old, I think. The land was originally the college's land, and it was sold when Larry McCoy was president. So, in a sense, the two sellers of the building, they built the original building a few years ago, and they used it for several things, like office, an office building. But this last set of tenants wanted it, they leased the building, but they wanted it to be a radiology center. So, they put in a lead room and all that stuff. So, it's not that old. Most of all of us that have been in college for a while remember that, when it was built, and about 15 years old. And it's behind our auto mechanics program. We bought an old people's tire program, a facility, and put our auto mechanics program in. So, it's really connected to our campus. If we, if we get this building, then all the land would be part of the campus, and it'll all be adjacent to each other.
I would just like to say, as being affiliated at one time with Southern Union State Community College, y'all know the wonderful health science system, center, and school that they built with the ambulance bay, and I was there when they were building all of that years ago. This building, you could not have paid an architect to come in and build the layout of what they're trying to do. Brandon and myself, we both went over there as consultants to kind of look at the area. The biggest price you have in building a building like that would be the lead walls, and they have it, it's done. They even have the lights over where you have to have for state, for x-ray zone. It is a building that's sitting there just waiting to be occupied by programs like this.
I did have one question, the building to be purchased, approval of an IRC grant, what is the status of that?
We did not receive the IRC grant. That's why we've been working on this for a while. We gathered the statistics, and we looked at everything, we saw the need. We've been working with Scott, and with Brandon, with all the, the local hospitals. We also worked with Helen Keller with their diagnostic imaging people. But then, when we didn't receive the grant, we had our SAC-ROC visit, so we sort of were preoccupied, and we, we took a few months to think about what we needed to do. And we feel like we need to go ahead and move on it before someone else purchases the building, because they now have a, have a, an agent trying to sell the building. So, we feel like, you know, we might want to go ahead and do it if we, if we're going to do it.
Chancellor, if all these, these academic programs that were proposed here, if we come up with a strategic plan to take line, where and when to add some of this, you know, to keep it up with the existing. Would you kind of look at each end?
Well, I think that's a good idea, because it is overall, you have to make a statement. Real world, as the state grows, and the demand increases, it changes from one area to another.
Ethan, you have some more on this program? Under executive, we've got several mission statements here. We've got a law state community college chancellor. Mission statement. Does it all need us to go over this individually? Mission statement, review, approval, red, purple. Wall State Community College, Hansford Bishop State Community College, Jefferson State Community College, J.F. Drake Community College. Any comments or questions? Out of 10, you've all seen the proposed 2019 board meetings and work session schedule. Chancellor, I don't know if you get any input from the board as to changes. I think these are all the second Wednesday, 12 months in 2019. Board members, we're open to making adjustments, some of these, I think, things come out. We can't, we can't anticipate every conflict at the time. I think the system office is good for conferences or anything. I did have one question, it follows on the second week in May, and that's when a lot of our graduations are being killed. Wouldn't you flip that means that it doesn't? And I'm just throwing that up for consideration, depending on the dramaticity or later. May, maybe we didn't do it this year, didn't do it the year before, it ended up on the second Wednesday. Like, we're fine for everybody, so that's the only, in that major. Maybe no conflict whatsoever, but I'm not hitting that question on, okay?
Yeah, one, one thing I'd like for us to consider is, if Chancellor get together, do a select group of our state, you know, people from Alabama.
You know, logistics come into play on that, but I think it's always good, good to keep in mind, and I think it's clear it is, where Chancellor, your schedule can accommodate that. I have 11, the budget request, we have our community health system for 1920.
Good morning. You will see in your packet, in the action item, where we are required to submit to the budget office November 1st of every year, a system budget for the next year, for 1920. And as you see, for 1920, we submitted a budget of $445,755,000. By the way, as we go through this, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, and I will briefly go over this information and ask and answer any questions that are necessary. We did ask for $445 million. If you will look at the attachment, it will show you some of the detail we submitted. If you look at the very bottom, you will see that we asked for an extra $64 million, which is about 16.7% more than the previous year, which is a very strong ask. We feel this year, obviously, with a good economy, that hopefully there'll be more funds available to use, or at least to be available at the state level. more funds available to use, or at least to be available at, at the state level to, to supply to us. A lot of this increase is, is really targeted toward workforce, as we'll, as we'll see in a moment, which is, which again, is certainly, certainly on everyone's mind these days. So if you will look at the report, I will, I will go through that quickly. You will notice on the community and technical colleges, we're asking for an extra $29 million for our colleges, or 9% more, for the colleges to, to complete their mission and to, and to, and stay economically viable. Correctional education, we're asking for an extra $2 million, an extra million in O&amp;M for our prisons programs. And as you know, through time, those are, those sometimes become stressed as far as their funding. And also, an extra million for a pilot program with the Department of Parole to be able to route students into, or their, their, their clients to adult education and certificate programs. For Mary and Military, we're, we're asking for a 25% increase. Colonel Ballahan has asked that we increase the O&amp;M by about 7.7% to accommodate a student success center, a cyber security training, and a, and a civil aviation career track program. Also, a capital improvements of 1.3 million for over three years for, to improve their infrastructure. For ATN, we're increasing that 21%. Request of adding personnel to more, complete the mission of ATN for a 10% increase, and then to help with that mission, to help with that training, a one-time cost for, for equipment. For the system office, we're asking for a 7.5% increase. We're also, as was shown earlier, for school safety, an amount for, for, help fund the government, the governor's initiatives to improve facilities for, for safety. Adult enrollment program, you're very aware of the fact that, you know, that program has been a success, and the demand's going to continue to grow. I will backtrack about the system office, and that increase, we know of our various initiatives that the Chancellor mentioned earlier concerning student success and enrollment increases, and also ERP and marketing initiatives. Also, adult education has asked for a modest increase to fill their needs. Distance learning is a, is a fairly significant increase, as Mr. Alexander was able to state earlier, indeed to fund that with our desire to, to have consistency with our offerings. With our automotive and manufacturing developmental program and scholarship program, as, you know, with the couple of years down the road, the Mazda Toyota plant coming online, and also increases in capacity for Mercedes-Benz and Hyundai, that is certainly a requirement that we have to, have to fulfill. And then, with the last two items, which are our workforce, the special pops, and workforce development, those are showing strong requests for increases. We all know the wonderful job that Jeff Lynn and his team and the colleges are doing to fulfill the, the requests from various local officials and from the, and from the legislature. And as we all know, this very strong economy and low unemployment and investment in the workforce probably gives the state its best return. So as we see, we're back to $64 million increase, which is 16.7% more than last year. Any questions?
Something would be beneficial if you included in the rationale, those items you mentioned, for instance, workforce, you know, and, you know, we see a huge, huge row up there, and just identify those areas and why we're saying this big, you know, we see the spreadsheet, our earliest budget request, with the increased numbers, but I think you have a little more detail, as you explained to us in the rationale section, it would be beneficial.
Okay. Well, we will, we will, we will comply with that, certainly, and create that. Anything else? Thank you.
Actually, Billy and I have a meeting. We'd like to, this week, where we really start to build the process. I don't know this, which is what we have to do, to comply with the state law. And for example, as you said, to that figure is maybe also the government, obviously, I will so much money to put in the building. But the real budget starts naturally, you know, it actually starts this week, where the chair of the House, we're going to talk to the chairman, say. Because I just want everyone to understand, whatever we ask for comes maybe, maybe a part of the decision-making process. But in general, this goes into the government budget, the government budget goes into the faculty. Generally, the chairs, the House, and Senate, kind of pretty much controls. As we go on, we're going to have to take this part, what we see, because we're going to work on this. I, I think I've said this is more a criticism, this is a unique, the budget year completed since September is, is accessible to the public, the revenue that came into the education program, that was above and beyond projected, so, there's been a lot of scrambling for those dollars. And there's still no decision about whether, or if it's still a college or an institution by the state. I think if it doesn't occur this coming year, it obviously, I think, will occur this year, which would be a core issue for us, that I think would be really interesting for us, so it may just, and that, I think, because they're all along the budget process. There's still, I'm, I'm not challenging, I'm disagreeing, yes, that's a good, good suggestion, but still go out and spend money, less on this. Our final item is a request, a resolution for issuance upon, which means that. We've had, we've had a question. Have you already presented this before?
No, this was not one I talked about last.
Okay. So this is not to increase the, if you approve.
So this, this resolution that we presented to you next month will be very similar to the one for Bevel that you considered earlier today, with its parameters resolution, it approves the outline of the terms, it approves the basic forms of the documents that will be delivered in connection with the issue. The notable differences that we're financing, both are refinancing of some existing debt and some improvements on the campus, so every vote, in the case of Bevel, of course, it's all refinancing, okay? In this case, it is on the issue. But otherwise, it'll be very similar, making towards, in terms of what is positive and what should be asked for.
Questions or comments from the board? Anything else to come before the board for the work session? Board have lunch, follow-up, work session. A reminder, once again, the December 12th meeting is when we have lunch for the state of education. Yeah, yeah, well, they got, we're going to be having that in our, so it's across this different venue, but only across the state. Thanks, thank you everyone for your presence. We'll be standing when we start.